Okay. I think we're ready to go. Okay, I think you're the host, so you may have to, uh...
Okay.
Am I the host? No, uh, Kate, sorry.
Okay, I'm gonna op-
Because I don't have any postcards here.
Okay, I'm gonna open the meeting. Here we go. And we're in. Live. So I'll just give a reminder to please put it on mute when you're not speaking.
Okay, are you opening it up, Kate?
No, you can start anytime.
Oh, we're ready to start?
Yep. We're, it's open.
Kate. I'm gonna call the meeting of the Capital Planning Commission to order, and roll the call, please. I will go through the, uh, Commissioner Christensen. I am you. Commissioner Ruth?
Yeah.
Commissioner Wells?
Yeah.
Commissioner Wells?
Here.
And I'm here, and that's it. I guess, uh... What happened to my agenda here? Okay, the next is the pledge allegiance. I mean, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the republic, to the republic, to which this world, to liberty, and justice are all. So, uh, for obvious reasons, uh, this, um, planning commission meeting is not physically open to the public. Limited staff are present in the council chambers, and planning commissioners are participating remotely by a video call. Members of the planning commission can use the reaction choices in Zoom to indicate they'd like to speak, similar to raising a hand. As always, this meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8. It is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday. It is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. on Saturday following the first rebroadcast at 1:00 p.m. on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed live from the city's website and the Zoom meeting link also available on our website. Our chief mission tonight is Victor. Public comment can be emailed to call into the planning commission. Members of the public may submit public comment once for each item. By email or phone call, you may not submit more than one email or call per item. There will be instructions, uh, on the screen, but just to review them before the item you wish to comment on, call the phone number and enter the meeting ID displayed. Press the hash key when prompted for a participant ID. To raise your hands and make a comment, press star nine on your phone, wait to hear that you're unmuted, and then make your comment. You will have up to three minutes to speak. If you are watching the meeting via Zoom, you can use the participant option to raise your hand and make a comment when unmuted by our moderator. For email comments, identify the item you wish to comment on in your email subject line. Email comments will be accepted starting now up until I announce that public comment for the item is closed. Each email comment will be read aloud for up to three minutes or displayed on a screen. Emails and calls received by outside, received outside of the comment period outlined will not be included in the record. Before we go on to, um, oral communications, any members of the public who are going to be, one, make comments on items not on the agenda, please, uh, send them in via email or, um, uh, otherwise, and we'll have them when we get to that. So, next item is additions and deletions to the agenda. Sir, excuse me, Mr. Pete Welch, I, uh, ATT crashed me out of this meeting for the last, right after the pledge of allegiance, I wasn't asked any questions, I hope. No, we were just going through the script. Okay, very good, thank you.
Um...
And, and the public comment instructions. So again, any additions or deletions to the agenda?
We did receive two public comments on item five B with, via email after the packet was published, and all planning commissioners should have received those through email. The Grand Avenue pathway, two comments came in.
Was that being, was that item gonna be continued?
No, um, that item is not being continued. The item that is being continued is four, I'm sorry. Let's see, um...
It was originally, uh...
Is the ballards.
...going to be continued, but that's not the case now, right?
Four B is going to be continued.
So, four B.
The ballards, yep.
Four B is being continued.
But five B, we did receive two public comment after the...
Five B, oh yeah, yeah, okay. All right, so, uh, then, the next item is public comment, and that would be, as I mentioned, on item, if they're not on the agenda, it'll take another 60 seconds or so to see if anyone has any comments they wanna make.
I'm looking at the participants, and I do not see any hands raised for items that are not on the agenda for public comment. And Sean, do you see the email?
We'll go on to commission comments, and then if we get any public comments, it comes a little late, we'll go back to those. Do we have any comments from commissioners at this point?
Comments?
Hearing none, no staff comments.
I did have one comment this evening. I just wanted to acknowledge that Liz Nichols, who has been helping us out with the planning commission meetings, uh, this is her final meeting for helping us out with the planning commission. She is retiring after 18 great years of the city, and her help has been much appreciated, so thank you, Liz.
Okay, on the, on behalf of the planning commission, I chair and act, uh, sentiment. Uh, so next item is approval of the minutes for October 1, 2020. We are, uh, moving forward on minutes now. Do we have any comments, additions, corrections to the October 1 minutes?
I move approval.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second, Commissioner Welch.
Any further discussion, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Welch?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruth?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilk?
Uh, aye.
Commissioner Christensen?
Aye.
People, aye, and, uh...
Aye.
Here, the chair, just up I do. Okay. Uh, next, take, that takes us to the consent calendar. Um, we have two items on the consent calendar. One is, uh, 201 Esplanade, and one is capital of those ballards, which is up for continuance, correct?
Correct.
I'd like to take those one at a time. Um, well, first, let me ask, does anyone wanna pull any of those from the agenda? Any member of the public would like a public hearing on either of those, and, um, the second one, the capital of those ballards, is just to be continued, so if you're, have a comment on the substance of that, you can save it for another night. So if you have any desire to have either of those heard by public hearing, please let me know. I would like to, um, have 201 Esplanade, uh, heard by public hearing.
Okay.
So we'll take, uh, item four B, which is the village ballers, and I think that, uh, Commissioner Welch and myself are, uh, recused from that. So, Commissioner Ruth, you can take the vote, please.
Okay, the, the vote to continue the ballards, uh, all in favor?
Okay, roll call.
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Welch?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilks?
You.
Commissioner Christensen? Commissioner Christensen? Commissioner Newman?
I'm recused, also.
And Commissioner Welch votes aye. We need a vote from Commissioner Christensen to continue this item.
I can, can you hear me? Aye?
Yes, okay, thank you for the motion, Mary.
Sorry. Did we need a motion in the second, because we didn't get a motion in the second on that?
Yes, we did.
Commissioner Welch will make a motion that we approve, uh, item four B to continue the capital of those ballers.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we did.
That is decided?
All set.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, look. Thank you. Now, let's go back to floor eight, a 201 Esplanade, and just have a quick public hearing on that, and first we'll have a staff report, please.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, uh, fine commission, everyone. Uh, this is 201 Esplanade for a new wall sign. It's a, it's in the Central Village zoning district, and it requires a sign permit because, by planning commission, because it is a new sign, if, since removed the original. Uh, this is Tacos Maran, uh, it's a restaurant at the eastern end of the Esplanade. The wall sign shown here is centered on their street front, facing the Esplanade and walkway. The promoted sign, the wall sign, it has a total sign area of 32 square feet. Sign is made of wood with raised lettering and does not have any illumination internal or otherwise. As part of its application, the original signage that was on the two awnings on the front was removed. The applicant also removed an existing non-conforming menu box that was exceeded due to the lapel sign. The place did pay aluminum menu box that does conform to the two square foot maximum size. And that's, that's pretty much it with that. Staff recommends approval of the project based on condition and approval of finding, and finding.
Need any questions of staff? I thought, Commissioner Welch, uh, I'll repeat a question that, that, that I asked Matt earlier, and he gave me an answer which I guess is satisfactory, but I'm thinking about it, maybe not. Uh, so, the question I had before was, wasn't there a sign there before? And the answer came back, no, there was no sign, it was just awning. But my question is maybe, maybe more general. I mean, that building's been there a long time. I can't imagine back in the days when it was, you know, El Pirata, or, you know, it's been a bunch of different things over the years, that there was never signage there. And if there was signage there historically, and you're just, you're just adding signage that's been there in the past, maybe not real recently, but in the past, does that even require a permit?
Katie, I can take that as a question.
Go ahead.
Who is, who's there? So, Sean here, okay, um, you're, you're absolutely correct. There has been and was up until Tacos Maran moved in, a variety of signage. That signage has changed over the years. Pre, the previous tenants have two awning signs, the signage right on the front of the awnings. That did go to the planning commission and was approved by the planning commission. This, if, if the applicant had so desired to replace the face of those awnings with their new name or logo, they could have done that administratively. It's what is a proposal to completely change the kind of signage they have, which does require approval by the planning commission.
Well, my question is really, if, let's say the previous owner, which was a lapel guy, didn't have a sign with a Tacos Maran sign, but the owner before that did have a, had a sign exactly in that same spot, a wooden sign with raised lettering, the whole thing. Does that, like, set precedence for that building such that even though it's changed owners a couple of times, in the election, you wouldn't need a permit because it's been accepted that that's a good place for a sign, and it's been approved in the past?
I can answer that one as well, too, Kate, if you like. Um, yeah, so it is not so much based on the property or business owner, it's based on what was there and, and if it was there within a timeframe of abandonment, after a sign is removed or replaced by something else, whether it's through, uh, just taking it down or a new text sign was approved, um, there's a period, I believe about six months, at which if it's not replaced, it's considered abandoned, and the, the entitlement to have that, that particular sign is, uh, mine, is irrelevant.
That makes sense, is that okay, the abandonment?
In this case, if it wasn't so much an abandonment as it was, they want a new, um, sign layout?
No, I, you answered my question.
Okay.
All right, I have a question, am I, did I read this correctly, that there was some violation that brought this to, uh, the planning, planning department's attention? So, there was a sign violation?
I can answer that, too, Kate, if you like.
Please.
Okay, uh, yes, there, the signs, as you may have noticed, the example we showed in the presentation was an actual physical sign on location. Um, the reverse order there is the result of a, of a coenforcement which based on the signs without getting the proper approvals. We work with the, the business to get them to apply for a sign permit, and, um, that's why we're here today.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I'll open the public hearing. And do we know whether anybody is planning to participate, Kate?
I'm checking right now for the participants on Zoom, and I don't see any hands raised. I'm now gonna go to, um, the public comment emails, and I'm also not seeing any new emails coming in, so there's no public comment at this time.
Yeah, I'll conditionally close the public hearing. If anybody shows up while we're discussing it, uh, we'll reopen it. So, I, I'm the one who, uh, removed this, and I guess, uh, we kinda go out of order, so people know where I'm coming from, is, um, I don't have any problem with their sign, I have a problem with they're not abiding by, uh, our, um, laws and regulations on a, kind of a, a pattern, which seems to be the story for this property. We had problems with prior owner, and I'm, I'm particularly concerned with the walkway, the public walkway, which they keep, uh, filling with tables so people can't get by. Have now the sign, and this business owner, I mean, I'm happy that they've come into town and they have a nice business, that they're experienced, they have other loca, at least one other location, and maybe two that I'm familiar with, so, Kate. I mean, I, my question is, how do we get across to them that this is not, like, a total wild west here, and we need to comply with the, uh, city rules? Is there any communication with them about the alleyway, any further communication?
Chair Newman, I, I did stop by and speak with them at one point about, uh, removing one of the tables, um, explaining that with the social distancing that's in place, they are, so they're allowed to have the three tables and six chairs, but because of social distancing, it's pushing the tables into that walkway. Um, we had a very informal discussion, I can make that a little more formal, and, um, we, we can also send out a letter and let them know, because, is that what you're referencing in the back, facing Zelda's? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, uh, I'm actually having some informal conversations with, I don't know, with the owner or someone who works there, and I, you know, I don't know whether it's just, uh, lack of understanding or disregard, but I, I have a hard time approving anything for a, uh, for an applicant who is in violation of rules. Important, what I consider to be important, uh, planning rules, those that's coastal commission requirement. Are you saying that they are currently not, not in compliance? Correct. If you try to walk through that, they, they have their tables that block the way. And that, that wasn't a COVID, uh, exception? Uh? To this, I don't know, is there COVID exception to the coastal commission, uh, access requirements?
No, they actually, they, they were given more outdoor seating out front that they're allowed to use for COVID-19 purposes, but they still, you know, they've got a conditional use permit, which allows three tables and six chairs off the back, but because of COVID and the need to separate, uh, have six feet between parties, which means nine feet between tables, um, it's pushed them into that walkway, so we can revisit that, and you could this evening add a condition to the sign that they must be in compliance with their CUP for outdoor dining, you know, as part of their...
I would like to do that.
Okay.
Uh, that is, that's important now. Uh, let me then make that motion that, uh, we approve this with the condition that we, uh, we add a condition to the sign approval that they are in compliance with, uh, with the coastal commission seating requirement. Access requirement, all just informed. Do I have a second? Oh, second. Okay, further discussion, did we get anything more from the public? Probably not, in this case.
Yeah, no additional public comment at this time.
Just for a state of discussion, I, I agree with what you're saying, I just don't know if it's relevant, it is time to, uh, assign, um, permit. Uh, to me, I think like enforcement, what do we do if you're taking a sign down, if they're down?
No, I, I get that, and I, I, I have the same feeling, but it's just like, I don't, they keep doing it, and I don't have any other letter.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I'm all for, uh, taking some form of action, I just don't know how relevant it is to, uh, tie to the sign, uh, permitting, but either way, I, I support getting sign up there so it's done correctly, and hopefully getting them on board to, uh, understanding what the coastal... on board to understand what the coastal commission expectations are and where access.
Well, don't, I mean, we have precedent for this, don't we? And secondly, uh, it's a building permit of sorts. We're focusing on the sign, but when we approve a modification of a building, we take into account the entire building and we want to make sure it's all in compliance. So I don't see why this is so odd to have this condition. Did we get a second? I can't remember.
Yeah, I said.
Okay, oh yeah, so some discussion, thank you.
I was just, I was just reading the discussion about wanting those kinds of things to permit.
Okay, point well taken. Are we ready for a vote? Commissioner Welch.
Aye.
Commissioner Ruth.
Aye.
Commissioner Welch. Aye. Commissioner Christiansen, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, aye.
Okay, and I, I do. So that takes us to public hearings. The first public hearing is 1360 41st Avenue. The notification for design, for other use permit for mixed-use development, adding two new residential, commercial structure located within the CC Sony District. You have a staff report? Thank you, Chair Newman. Sean, next slide please.
Existing structure at 1360 41st Avenue is a non-performing two-story commercial structure created by Hanson Furniture. A lot of the 41st Avenue commercial corridor is surrounded by a one and two-story commercial building. Next slide please.
Did you say two-story?
Yes. I mean, it, it has two stories and then the one, the helm building has one story and then office building on the corner is two-story, so it is in the mix of one and two. Uh, there's a large parking area behind 1360 41st Avenue that belongs to the adjacent parcels at 1408 41st, which is helm, and the office building at 1350 41st, which is an office building. Active to the parking area is provided by two driveways, one off of 41st Avenue and one off of Peach Street, shown here in yellow. Next slide please. This is the existing first and second story floor plan. Uh, the second story is on the left and the first story is on the right. Uh, if you look at the left-hand side, you'll see the existing upstairs office space that's generally not very visible through the street in previous image, but that's the area that's being converted. And then if you look at the first story plan on the right, existing retail area takes up the front portion of it and then in the back there is an existing garage that was used mainly as a loading and unloading zone and then eventually a garage doors were added and used for storage. Next slide please. Here are the proposed first and second story floor plans. Uh, as you see on the bottom right, the existing garage on the bottom right is being converted into residential garage apartment spaces that will be reserved for the residential units above. And if you look at the second story plan on the left, that previous office space has been converted into two residential units. Next slide please. Under the Capitol Municipal Code, multiple family residences are in conditional use in the CC Sony District. The use may be permitted by the planning commission if it uses secondary to a principal permitted use such as a commercial on the first floor on the same lot, uh, subject to certain limitations, which are listed here. The proposed project involves the conversion of existing floor areas that do not change the ceiling heights of the existing structure. However, the existing first and second story floor, sorry, first and second floor ceiling heights are both only eight feet, uh, so they do not comply with limitation number one and two, except where the structure is illegal non-performing. Next slide please. Municipal Code, uh, in the consideration section in 1760 030 states that in considering an application for a conditional use, the planning commission shall give due regard to the nature and condition of all adjacent uses and structures. Due to the limited size of the parking area behind the structure at 1360 41st Avenue and the close proximity of the parking areas on the two adjacent parcels, the proposed project has the potential for adverse impact on the availability of parking on those adjacent parcels. Next slide please. The proposed parking also does not comply with the minimum number of parking, required parking spaces, minimum parking space dimensions, or the minimum covered parking space dimensions. However, because the proposed project is not adding the used floor area or increase the intensity of use by requiring more parking than is currently required, the non-performing parking does not have to be brought into compliance. The creation of a new residential use on the property, two actually, has the effect of reducing the number of available parking spaces for the underparked existing commercial use and that's essential to negatively affect the availability of parking on the adjacent parcels. Therefore, a parking study was conducted to analyze whether or not the nine proposed onsite parking spaces are adequate for a commercial and residential mixed-use land use combination under a shared parking range. The parking study conducted by Timothy Horn demonstrated that the nine proposed parking spaces can be adequate for a retail and residential use combination, which requires nine spaces, but would be one parking space short for an office and residential use combination, which requires ten. Next slide please. A new office used in the commercial space at 1360 41st Avenue would not require a new planning permit, should be a capital one. So in order to ensure adequate parking for a potential office residential use combination in the future, the planning commission could include an additional condition in the future approval, uh, shown here, requiring a parking study on an adjacent parcel and a long-term lease of one additional parking space on that lot if it is found to have an excess parking space available. Next slide please. So that, that recommends the planning commission review and approve the project based on the commission's approval and signing.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Hearing none. Uh, well, there's the public hearing and do we have any requests to be heard from anyone on this item yet?
Yes, Bill Kemp, the architect, and also Steve Allen, the property owner. Um, I will, we'll start.
Okay, and so these are people who, can we patch them in?
Yes.
Katie, you can do that. Uh, this is Steve Allen, the property owner, and Bill Kemp, the architect of projects that are, they're engaged.
Okay.
Okay, Steve, you can now speak.
Mr. Allen, it looks like you are unmuted in gentleman.
Mr. Allen, are you with us?
I'm with you, can you hear me, Chair Newman?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, commissioners, um, thank you for your time. Um, Steve Allen, managing member of the ownership of this property. We purchased this property about a year ago, um, head and investment. You know, I'm a broker by trade. Um, I've leased property on 41st Avenue over San Francisco County for 20 years. I've never seen it slow, um, in finding you since it's absent during the 2020 pandemic year. We really struggled to find a commercial tenant that could lease, um, the entire, you know, approximately 4,400 square feet. So in the sense that I really like this project, um, that they'll get, hopefully put together for a couple of reasons. Number one, it, you know, provides additional housing units, which we all now are needed. And number two, you know, my understanding is that it's an existing apartment with your grandfather continuing the office or retail use, which is notoriously continued. Um, but the Timothy Horn's, um, parking studies, if the city had commissioned, you know, if it's residential upstairs and then retail down below, um, for the study, that would be a 40% on the identification of parking. Um, office would be about a 33% reduction. So we talked to the neighbors, um, they seemed to be in support of it and, you know, the apartments upstairs would be much easier to rent and then the smaller currency in the downstairs would also be easier to lease. So, you know, that's why I like the project, um, at this time.
Do we have any questions, Mr. Allen, other than mine? Okay, uh, so there seems to be an issue in terms of the parking requirement for retail versus office, uh, the downstairs portion. Is it your intent to be leasing it for retail or for office, or do you know?
Uh, we, so Harry, we really don't know if it's time, um, we preemptively leased four parking spaces on the adjacent property, um, the Helm Sun Valley property, thinking that would help us find a tenant, um, this year if we have not. So, you know, if necessary, you know, we could do a parking study continually for the duration of this office tenant, but the simple fight thing, you know, the goal is probably start a retail tenant, but we really have no prospect at this time.
Yeah, okay, I understand. Thank you. Any other questions? Is not, does Mr. Kemp want to join us?
Yes, I will now, uh, open the mic.
Mr. Kemp, are you with us?
Mr. Kemp.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, if you'd, you'd like to address the commission?
Yes, I would. Um, thank you commissioners for, for hearing this project. Um, I'm really involved in this building since it changed by, I think, it's the fall and mid 2000s to have home furnishings. And then, there's a couple of things, you know, with your conditions of approval that I, I thought were a little excessive. Um, there's conditions nine and 10, which are stormwater related. We're not doing any work outside the, uh, the building. Everything is, is internal except for a couple of units and, and entry. Um, so we're not planning to disturb anyone's society, so I'm just, I just know that having these kind of requirements can, can take time and money on, on the applicant's part, to, on the owner's part, to get through that process. So I just, I just think that the drainage event should take a, uh, two.
So the public who may be putting into this, those, those are the items having to do with the drainage plan and the stormwater management plan?
Correct.
Okay.
And then the other thing I wanted to point out is that, um, uh, in, in staff's report, they talked about the, uh, the ceiling heights of the, uh, of the building and, and actually, but we are the building where the apartments are, uh, the ceiling height is lower for years and I just started to play on the main retail floor, I would say, I have 1,012 feet. So some, you know, people are, um, other than that, is there others for questions?
Any questions of Mr. Kemp? None, thank you very much. And, uh, is anyone else, like, uh, in the meantime, indicated a desire to address the commission from the public?
There are no additional.
Not, so I'll close the public hearing conditionally again. If anybody pops up, we'll reopen. Uh, commissioners, anyone want to start it out here?
Uh, I just, uh, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just going to say that I think this is a really great piece of this building. Um, I, I agree with the conditions, but, um, the, I just think that making a mixed-use building seems like a very great solution. Just wanted to offer support.
Okay, and Commissioner Ruth, you were going to.
Actually, I was going to say what Courtney said, so I don't need to say anything.
All right, good, thank you. Courtney. Commissioner Welch, or Welch?
Commissioner Welch has a question, gets more, a question of staff. Based on builder comments about conditions nine and 10, were these boilerplate conditions or were there some thought put into the need for a stormwater and drainage plan?
There are boilerplate conditions, but I believe if I look back, I, I, I believe they are specifically requested by Public Works Department because they're the, just the concerns of the past on the site related to drainage and the back, um, kind of flooding those garage parking areas. I believe it was addressed, um, through some kind of a surfacing plan, but I believe that's why they want to see those stormwater, um, plans to make sure that the drainage and stormwater will function without causing issues in that residential garage.
Do you believe that there's existing stormwater drainage plan that needs to be dusted off and looked at again?
I believe that they could probably do that from my understanding of the, the history of the back parking lot.
Thank you.
And, and I will add that, um, the condition number 10 says to the satisfaction of the Director of Public Works, and I'm sure Director Jesburg would be happy to work with the applicant so they don't go beyond what's necessary. Um, but I would suggest leaving that condition in.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Welch, do you have any thoughts on this?
I had a look at the comment, I didn't see the project, uh, I didn't understand the, uh, conditions and I agree with, uh, the, the, how we condition that, so I think some, okay, people want to move to motion.
Oh, I just did, let me just, I mean, here, I agree with Commissioner Christiansen that I, I think this is the terrific, uh, concept of the property. The only thing I question is how we handle this, uh, issue of satisfying the parking requirements for retail use, but not for an office use. And, uh, the way the condition reads, if I'm reading it correctly, is if they want to put an office in there, then they have to do another parking study to show that they have another space someplace else that, uh, is acceptable. And I guess the staff would, I mean, can't we just approve this for a retail use if they decide they have an office tenant, uh, addresses that time?
Uh, you could accept that, as I mentioned in the staff report, but there's no permitting for a use change like that, so there would be no reason to, you would even know a commer, uh, opportunity to get a new space, so.
But it could have permitted, this is a conditional use permit, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, can we make a conditional use permit for just retail use?
Uh, good, um.
And then they could, uh, if they want to do an office use, might be, you know, maybe it wouldn't be a need for it, so they, and they'll say we've got spaces there and, and convince the staff, like, and save some time and money.
I think that's a, can I have a condition, these sort of modification in that certain sense for the, to add the office use to it and then any more, more work and time and money.
Here, Professor Newman, Commissioner Welch, I would be willing just to add a condition that if it is used in the office space, if they have not been placed, that we don't go back to another parking study. And it could just, to me, to make it to be, have, have it accounted and so then we come back to the planning commission, so, I don't know.
I. I agree with Commissioner Welch. I just, I feel like giving them as many tools as possible to get their, um, commercial space leased and rented and occupied is pretty paramount in their interest, you know?
Yeah, I agree. And I, I mean, all, all we really need to say is that if they, if they do a retail use, they're fine, if they do an office use, they need to arrange for another space.
And the reason the parking study requirement is in there is that the adjacent property, Helm, actually does not have sufficient parking currently to provide one extra space to them. Uh, the code specifically reads that, you know, required parking for one parcel cannot be used for the, another parcel's requirements, so they have to prove that the other lot actually has an extra space. Um, and we actually know because we dug into that as part of this in the early part of our discussions, that, um, that adjacent lot does not have the space. They do have a plan that I think they're going to pursue eventually that would add, uh, I forget how many, like nine spaces maybe to that helm lot. Um, and at that time, they would have extra spaces to lease, but currently they do not have an extra space, so.
So what could the study do?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, we could change the terminology that they need a lease from an adjacent property with adequate parking, with, with available parking. And they would need to show that they've produced enough parking on that site if it's through lifts or some other mechanism to create more parking, but I, they may not have to go so far as a study unless they were trying to prove that a mixed use in some fashion could decrease.
Do you want to use or something?
Yeah, but I think we could say lease.
The conditions that were in it cover both the helm lot and the office lot, because the office lot actually has, on the other side, has a much larger parking lot that potentially could have spaces, but there's, there are quite a few different uses in there and I, we would have to decide to determine what the parking intensity or, you know, requirements are for that large office building to determine whether that large parking lot has extra space as well. Another slide please.
I think we should do like babysit, just say that they need to, if they switch this to office, they need to demonstrate they have enough parking. They need to be flexible and make them figure out how to do that. Anyone? Agree with that or disagree, or?
It's up to me.
I'm on board with that.
All right, so do we have a motion?
I, I just want to follow up on one thing, uh, as I was directed earlier, is we were talking about keeping condition 10, but we're okay with nine being taken out?
I would suggest keeping them. From what Matt said at the Ark and Site meeting, this did come up, their conditions, Public Works always provides us with the conditions that they'd like on a permit, so although they seem standard, they, they did, Danielle always reviews the projects and attaches the conditions that are relevant, so if the Public Works Department can waive them if it's unnecessary, as Mr. Kemp was explaining, but at this point, let's, I think we should leave it on the permit and leave it up to Public Works whether or not there's, the requirement has, has already been satisfied.
Okay, with that, I'll just make a motion that we approve, as staff's proposal with addition of a condition on the parking for office to be determined by the tenant showing that they have enough parking.
We have a second?
Second thought.
Okay, any further discussion, and we'll do a roll call. Commissioner Welch?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruth?
Aye.
Commissioner Christiansen?
Aye.
Commissioner Welch?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that's unanimous, and good luck. Sweet project. Next item is the Grand Avenue Pathway Improvement. This is an application for coastal development for an interdrainage improvement between Oakland and Hollister Avenue on the Grand Avenue Pathway in front of 100 Oakland Avenue and 404 Grand Avenue in the R1 Single Family Residential zoning district. Project is in the coastal zone, obviously, and requires coastal development, which is what we're actually doing. Do we have any recusals on this? Commissioner Welch, are you okay on this one?
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm sorry to.
Drop to 500 feet, okay. Good. Staff report?
Thank you. As a, this is an application for a coastal development permit, which would be P for drainage improvements in the other private way in front of the two residential properties in the single-family residential zoning district. It is, as you see in the smaller blue box to the bottom of the selection, it's actually right along the Grand Avenue Pathway where the pathway used to be, but this is on behalf of both those properties next to it. On December 2nd, 2019, Public Works staff learned that a portion of the Grand Avenue Pathway between Oakland and Hollister Avenues had failed, with a complete loss of a section of pathway. This failure had been anticipated in 2017, when the city council authorized the closure of this section of pathway due to geologic instability. In response, the city authorized drainage improvements under an emergency coastal development permit that included a new drainage inlet, as shown here, and outfall on Hollister Avenue. The TDP was subsequently approved by the planning commission in February of this year. Despite the drainage improvements, the failure site has continued to experience erosion due to soil exposure and partial surface flow towards the site. On November 28th, 28th, 2020, the community development director approved an emergency coastal development permit for drainage improvements. These improvements included a 12-inch-deep concrete drainage ditch, hand grating and contrary to the slope, slope reseeding, and removal of damaged materials from the pathway and private improvements. The activity is also proposing landscaping of disturbed areas and repair of retaining walls, those are subject to this TDP. They were not included as part of the emergency TDP approval. The above site plan, created for last winter's city improvements, indicates the intended path of surface drainage. The current proposal will help restore a continuous path of travel for surface drainage between Hollister and Oakland Avenue. Of particular concern in the original TDP as with this, this fall coastal development permit is that area in red. The proposed site plan with a reverse orientation that shows the ocean at the top of the page and the water at the bottom. The proposed project includes drainage improvements completed under an emergency TDP. Under the coastal municipal code, a coastal development permit is required for repair and maintenance activities requiring the presence, whether temporary permits of mechanized construction equipment or construction materials on any sand area or bluff or environmentally sensitive habitat area, as defined by the Coastal Act, or within 20 feet of the coastal water streams. The proposed work here is adjacent to bluff along former sections of the Grand Avenue Pathway, therefore a coastal requirement is required. A condition of approval has been added to reflect a coastal commission recommendation for last winter's improvements. It's, works over the same condition, requiring that the, that's the ability to, the, the old material that's been, that's overhopped and has damage as a result of the failure be cleared as much as safely possible.
Matt, can I ask you a question on that real quick?
I think you need Sean.
Oh, Sean, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
On, on the removal of those materials, does, how big a distance back to the edge of the block are we talking about? Or are we just talking about items that are overhanging the bluff?
We're talking about items that have been affected as a result of the failure or are almost, you know, about, yeah, so yeah, basically things that are already impacted. For example, some of the stress cracks and beginnings of failure.
Okay, for example, the pictures are showing the fence on the left, that would be removed?
Yes, if they can do so safely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You've finished your match. Oops, sorry, someone forgot to ask a question.
I believe Commissioner Christiansen has her hand up.
Well, with that, that's recommended the planning commission approve the project based on conditions of approval and finding?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we did cut you off, credit the important part of your presentation. All right, this is a public hearing, and I'm guessing that we have someone from Public Works that would like to address us?
Yeah, this application came in actually from the property owners to do the same work that our Public Works Department had done. So we do have the two property owners and John Hart, who actually did the work on available via Zoom. And it looks.
So the city and the property owners are jointly applicant here?
You know, the property owners are the applicants here, and they've applied for an encroachment permit to do the work.
Okay, so do we have any property owners that, other than, I know we got some written communications.
Um, I.
Do we have anyone that wants to address us?
Yes, it looks like John Hart, and then followed by Jim Castellanos. I'm going to, I've just opened this up to John Hart. John, it's your turn to speak.
John, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good. Yeah, I'm on 404, what was now 404 Grand Avenue, which is the house sort of next to Jim's, which is 402 Grand Avenue, and I think it's, if you have any questions about what we're planning, I mean, the effort, et cetera, I, is John David on the call? Because he would be, he's our, he's the person that's basically doing all of this, so I would suggest that, I mean, he's the expert. But what we've done up to now is we've put in the B ditch so that the flow of water will safely go around the, the opening, and when it starts raining. And what remains to be done is to seed the, the area under it so that eventually we can, you know, slow up erosion, et cetera, and sort of replace the plants that got all washed away. I mean, so that's the, the only, what's left to be done is the seeding. That's all that remains to be done. And, but that was left for, to, to gain approval by the planning commission. And also, we'll clear out, you know, any of the old pipes and things like that that's being done. But again, the details of this, can you tell if John David is on the call or on the Zoom?
He is.
So I, I might want to turn it, if we, if you want any detailed discussion on the subject, I would suggest that he do the discussion, not me.
Okay, well, we'll probably hear from him also.
Okay, I'm, I'm, that's it.
Okay.
Okay, and then we had someone else?
Yes, next, I'm opening to Jim Castellanos. Jim?
Okay.
Hey, can I?
Yes.
Can I answer?
You can hear you.
Okay, yeah, I'll echo John's sentiments, but our intent really is not to do anything obnoxious or that doesn't look good, but really just to slow the process of erosion down as long as we can and try and run out the block. That's, that's our intent. So, you know, appreciate your understanding and cooperation. Thank you very much. And John's right, John David from Prime Land State has spearheaded the whole project, and I think he's done a really great job, and he's, he's done actually a lot of erosion control work along the cliffs. In fact, Chris County, he's, he's a very knowledgeable guy, and he's the one that needs to be seen, so anyway, thank you very much.
Okay, so I guess we're gonna hear from John David, if he's with us?
Okay.
Mr. David?
Okay, Mr. David, you're now.
Is he filling up on your screen?
He's muted.
I don't see him at all, I'm lying.
John David, do you need a?
He's muted.
He's muted himself. He's there, he's here.
Mr. David, if you can hear us, please unmute if you'd like to address us. No? Uh, okay, well, we'll come back to him.
Oh, here we go. Mr. David?
Yes?
I, I believe.
He's not there anymore.
Yeah, okay, well, let's conditionally close the public hearing, and we'll hear from him if he shows up. Commissioners, thoughts?
I have one question. And under discussion in the staff report, item four states the landscaping of disturbed areas, fencing and restoration of stone retaining wall. Are some of those items, for example, the stone retaining wall, are they encroaching into the public property? Anyone?
Lanna Sisanto?
Yeah, my, that is.
Okay, well, I'm just curious, if, if the stone retaining wall is encroaching, why would we, the city, be repairing it?
You're not.
That's not what the item says.
So this work, this work is being.
The applicants that are responsible for this work, the city isn't actually looking at any of this.
Okay. Okay, I close it up.
I may, please. Commissioner Welch, they just heard me, the reseeding of the landscape here. Are there conditions on that, like native, native plants, something like that? Or are we gonna get complaints that people looking at the cliff sides see some horrible non-invasive whatever up there?
Sean here, yeah. The seeding varieties were listed in the worst synopsis on one of the attachments, so that is what they would be following.
Did Daniel or the area or anybody take a look at that and make sure that those were acceptable plants?
I'm going to.
So.
Did you hear that? They're California native grasses, they're six, six species.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm looking for, some, some reassurance that they were California native species. Thank you.
So now we have John David on the line, if you have any specific questions for him. And that was John David speaking.
Yeah, sorry, I don't know how I lost you, but for me to finish, all we wanted to do would be to initiate vegetation on both sides of the B ditch as needed and on the face. So there's just a little bit of cleanup, a couple of posts to be cut off. We were gonna do this one. Oh, you know, there's, there's just a big chunk of, of the pavement that's still left, the asphalt pavement, that already has a big fissure behind it, so we're, we're wanting to be cautious and not do too much. We don't really want a lot of compression, a lot of jet camp.
Well, looks like we found him and we lost him. But I think we have the gist of it.
Yeah.
If he gets back on, we'll, we'll let him finish. In the meantime, do we have any other commissioner thoughts on this before we go to a vote?
Yeah, sure, person, I'd like to say something, but Sean, if we could go to the pictures and kind of show an overview of the bluff in two different views, I'd appreciate it. Well, so the one that was overhead view. Now, that works, too, though. So in the upper left-hand corner is where this lab failure was. The original failure, the cause of closing of the bluff is actually the lower right-hand, which is further to the east of this location. I think the bulldozer was surprised that that area went before the suspected area where the drain is coming on the lower right-hand picture, but part of that is, I think, the maintenance of that pathway and the water was getting behind, you can see where the red circle is running and causes problems. That, that area, the city property line actually goes, you know, you kind of saw it, it kind of follows along, and if you can see right over the red circle is a fence line, and it kind of goes right behind, there's a little fire pit by the bench there. I just happened to be on the planning commission when that project came through, and so that, that, the city property, it seems that thing. One of my concerns always been, and what have we done, and what is the coastal commission allowing us to do to protect this property? We've lost our roads and now slowly eating away at these properties, and probably one of my biggest contingents with the coastal commission is, I'm sure all the commissioners know, is the ability for us to protect. In fact, the city of Capito has a depot hill bluff safety and protection measure, and if you read the purpose of it, it's to promote destabilization of the depot hill bluff, the hydro bad noise I've heard it so far, and thereby enhance the safety of those persons who walk above and below the depot hill bluff. And it talks about going, also protecting the property and the structures and the vicinity of the depot hill bluff. And obviously, I, I think the coastal commission is hampering this, and it's unfortunate. I understand the need for the property owners to actually have to take this, you know, as, that's probably some of the questions that most of my fellow commissioners have on how this is coming through, and it's actually not the city doing this, it's the property owners doing this work, which obviously they have the best. which obviously they have the best of interest in doing that. So I fully support it. I, I, I hope that if you look at that water that comes out of that V ditch, comes down the street and then slowly rolled it off the Grand Old Fort Dope, but things to me like, we still need to be concerned about the drainage on that hill as a whole. And I would, I'd like to see the city councils just stay on top of this, if, if, you know, even our residents. And I think we need to do our best to take care of that area as, as long as we can, as we should catch the money, as we talked about, so, the time is ticking, I think, as long as we can. I support it, I wish, I wish we could have more, and I just hope that the team will do as best to take care of the water that comes out of the V ditch, to make sure it doesn't affect the residents. Kind of said that, I'll, that's some of what's been, I think.
This is Commissioner Welch. And maybe this is more for staff, but one of the letters we got, I think it was from Mr. Skip Allen, talked about a lot of, a lot of issues that really, to me, didn't warrant directly pertinent to this particular thing. If we wanted to address those, he talked about hedges and all kinds of things. Is it appropriate to be, bring those up as part of this motion, or should we, should, should he bring those to staff and put those on the agenda? I'm just confused about procedure and how to address this concern.
Yes, um-
Does the staff want to respond to that?
I, I'd be happy to. I discussed this with the Public Works Director today of how would we handle the removal of encroachments, of revoke, how would we revoke, you know, one of our revocable encroachment permits? And we could do that, it would not be part of this, but we, you could ask us to bring forward a revocable encroachment permit for review. If there were an item that, say, for a safety issue, you felt it should be removed, we, we could definitely bring that to the planning commission for review. But it wouldn't-
I'm not sure I followed that. You're saying that this fellow should, should bring up-
Oh.
-an item if, if it was legitimately a concern with the coastal commission or with safety, bring that forward to staff and then the staff would bring it forward to the planning commission?
Well, so I, I believe the planning commission could ask us to bring that up. Let me, let me do some quick research to make, make sure I get you a hundred percent the right answer, but it would be something that would come back to you for review. I, I'm not exactly sure of how it would get called up to the planning commission, if it would be a city council action or the Public Works Director suggesting that it go back before planning commission. But all of these larger items that are along the bluff, the improvements, had to be, should have been approved by the planning commission. So it would be there, I believe it's planning commission's review to revoke the permit. But I'll, I'll check on that while we discuss.
Okay, so I'm okay with you coming back to it, that some later comment, it is clear that most of his comments, not all of them, don't apply to the bigger applications, but, but I would hate to choose no more. So if we can bring it up at some other time, I'm happy with that, thank you. Okay, anyone else? I only, I'll just say briefly that I always am amused by these applications when the GD's already out of the bottle. I mean, what happens if we deny this permit or it's already done? I guess they have to put it back the way it was. First time to speak facetious, but it just seems odd to me. But I guess that's the process. I think it would be easier if the city just abandoned that property. Well, it's very standard, it's, we're losing it, but-
I, I would be facetious by saying I think the city abandoned it a long time ago, it's my little regret, but. I would like to make a motion that we approve the plan, I commend the gentleman for trying to curate his own property. And then I would like to add a condition that the, the city Public Works does address water issues that's coming out of the drainage and make sure it's not going to impact the other public property.
Well, I think that's a good idea, but I don't know that really fits the application here, that's to condition your, not imposing on the applicants, right?
That's, that's true. I'm going back to what Skip's request was, you kind of overcame talking about this whole thing, is-
You just make the suggestion that it would be half done.
Yeah, I think Public Works needs to take a look at how we're doing the drainage.
I would say, if I have a motion that we can have, have the city to pass those sentiments on?
Well, I would like to put something in my motion that addresses the bad, the public works, addresses one way or the other, if the water comes out of this drainage ditch, I think it's appropriate. We've taken the water from this pathway to protect their property and it's being directed into Oakland Street now and, and the rest of the green. So I think it would be appropriate for a request to Public Works to address the water issue coming from that. This, this is not the applicant's water, this is in the city right wing. Now, they may have taken the initiative to do the work there because they're trying to protect the property, but it's the city property, this is not, this is not the applicant's property that they're dealing with. So I think that Public Works, in Capitol, has some play in this and I think the limitation is right.
Okay.
My, my understand-
However, on the applicant, I think that was Chairman Goodman's point, the condition on the proposal wouldn't affect the city at all, it would affect the applicant?
No, I, I think, I understand that, so that's why I changed it to saying a condition by request of the Public Works to address the water that's running off from this-
It has to be applicant to appeal to the Public Works Department to do that.
Um, I- Director Jesburg will be, has, yeah, Public Works will be monitoring the water and keeping an eye on, you know, the change in flow. So they, I know that is part of the plan with, once this work is done, they plan on monitoring, so.
Okay, can, can we just put that wording in there? The Public Works will monitor the water coming from this area? I think we talked to Steve about that and-
Yeah, Steve, Steve has said that they'll be monitoring the, the water based on our conversation. I, I don't know if it's-
I would just like it captured that this water that's coming onto the center of property is going to affect the property, the, the owners there, but it's on the, it's on the property, we need to be able to handle that, that water. I, I understand we're having a conversation about it, but I'd like to keep it captured somehow, whether it's in the minutes. Obviously, we don't want to make a conditional decision, it is the applicant, owner of the homeowner, so I think I spend enough time talking about it.
Yeah, I- I think capturing that in the minutes is appropriate.
We should have a, a motion that doesn't include conditions that aren't really the applicant's responsibility.
I, I agree with that, you mean?
Okay.
After, after my motion was, my motion would be to approve the permit as outlined by staff.
Any other say? Okay, rolls call, vote. Commissioner Welch?
Hi.
Commissioner Welch.
Hi.
Commissioner Christiansen?
Hi.
Commissioner Ruth?
Hi.
And Chair Lozai, so that's unanimous. Next is the director's report.
Okay, thank you. This evening, I just have one update for you, that the city council just adopted a code of conduct. And I was going to distribute that to the planning commission, and then I thought it would be appropriate in the new year that we could spend some time introducing what the code of conduct is. But I will send that out in an email tomorrow and then see you all have time to review it and once, with the recent election, and I'm not sure exactly if TJ is going to be volunteering with the new council member to partner up. But anyway, at this point, I'm not sure exactly which planning commissioners we'll have moving forward. So I thought it'd be more appropriate to go over this in the new year, but I did want to let you know that it has been adopted and I will circulate. Other than that, the only new update I have that's the COVID-19 related in terms of land use, is that we put out direction or guidance for tents, and we worked really closely with Central Fire on that. And so guidance went out to all the businesses a little over a week ago. And at this point, I, Sean, can you, let me, was there one application so far that's come in to the city for, for a tent?
I've had a number of inquiries that have come in to me yet, but I'm expecting-
Yeah. So with the winter months approaching and the desire to keep warm, we've put out some guidance and there's fire ratings that need to be followed and heating and there's, we tried to keep it simple, but due to the, the dangers of wind and fire, there's quite a few specific building-related and fire-related guidance in there. So we'll, we'll see whether or not they're utilized, but that guidance has been published and is available. And those permits, of course, are free because it's COVID-related. And any tent that goes up will be inspected by our building official and also the fire marshal. And that concludes the director's report.
Any commissioner communications? Does the White Commission have any comments on the, on adding tents to the outdoors V? Or is that just for information?
That was an informational update. Do you have any comments on them? I'd be happy to-
It seems like it's the purpose, that's all. I'd be curious to know if the county health officials talk about creating enclosures outdoors.
So you're only allowed to have one wall within these tents, so it's really not a full enclosure, it's just one wall can get closed. Otherwise, it has to be 75% open. So the idea of these being really warm is, depends on the heating source they use, but you can't have any open flame under these either. So I, I'm not sure that the tent will be any better than just having the open air with the nice propane heaters to keep folks warm. So I'm not sure if this is going to take off, but it's an option if wanted. But it does have to remain 75% open.
I assume it's, I assume it's done in, a little early in New York City?
Mm-hmm.
And what they do is they have like drop-down walls that roll up, that aren't rigid, that you could run through, you could get out if you need to. That might be something to consider.
So that-
They roll up when it's nice, they drop down when it's cold.
I think that's a part of the beach, the COVID problem issue, but-
Yeah.
Closer, I found it right now, Closer does a very large tent on the beach, that has GD and it's, it's a very comfortable place to have dinner, even in the cooler weather, so hopefully it helps our, our businesses and, and those two, two well.
So are we going to have, are we going to have a meeting in December?
Yes.
Yes, yes, we are. Okay, so that will be, since we are going to have some changes in the makeup of the commission possibly, that will be our last meeting for this commission as presently constituted, unless everyone is brought back by new council people. But I guess we'll see you all in first week in December. And unless anyone has anything further, while we're during the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye.
Good night.
Goodbye.
Nice job, girls.